That's what, what do you call that?
Relax.
There we go. Too late now, my dear.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, February 17th. Welcome to members of council and staff and members of the public watching on Facebook. Call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Manley, that committee members accepts the agenda of the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, moving on, there are no delegations. Staff reports, Administration Department, I have a motion moved by Councilor Massey, seconded by Councilor Noble, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report AD 2021 02, departmental work plan update, February 2021, from the Administration Department for information purposes. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as council can see, and as you know, the Administration Department's been fairly busy with HR issues and legal issues at the beginning of 2021. However, certainly, we've been working on other important projects, such as the Lagoon Project, and also working through other departmental work plans, as you'll hear today in the Committee of the Whole. Through some of our legal and HR work, we have identified some policies that need updating. So you'll see in Q1 and Q2 of this this year, the Workplace Violence and Harassment Policy will be coming back to the table for councils to review. And there's some updates we need to make to that. And also, there'll be some staff training that goes along with that as well. We're also going to be looking at records retention, and I've been in contact with some of the other clerks in the area, and they're also looking at records management and records retention in 2021. As you know, towards the end of this year, we'll be getting into election time for the clerks. So we want to make sure we're getting that work done towards the beginning of this year and finishing in the end of 2021. Other than that, certainly after council's approval of the Development Charge's study, I'll be working on the RFP for that. And I can take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? Go ahead, Councilor Manley.
Yeah, just one through you, Sarah. Just wondering, we've mentioned, talked before about staff files, staff personnel files, and that kind of thing. Is that part of the management, the what you were talking about there, or is that something different?
So certainly, it's part of the records retention. There will be a section on how long we have to keep the information in the file. But also, including in that is something I was just speaking to the mayor about. And it was a discussion at the CIO table this morning in our meeting that we're looking at the possibility of doing some HR records also. So the possibility of creating a central location for all HR files, again, through some of the some of the things that have happened at the end of 2020 and the beginning of 2021, have brought some of that to the forefront as far as records management, dividing the files between payroll and HR and separating them out, and also making sure that we have all the sign-offs from all the employees on important policies like confidentiality, workplace violence and harassment, code of conduct, and all those sorts of things. So right now, we have good file management, but it'd be good to have a central location and have someone in charge of it.
Thank you. Counselor Winston.
I'm wondering what the plan is as far as performance management, helping, you know, looking at the values that council and staff or upper management have, and how we can share and train those values in staff and help them develop their skills and abilities.
Certainly. So through, so we've been discussing with the senior management team for a while on the performance appraisals. We use an old system right now, and it's not consistent amongst departments. Different departments do different things. We've also, I've reached out to some legal counsel on performance management for also unionized staff and non-union. Certainly, collective agreements can change how you can do performance management. But in my review and on my, in my, my report today, you'll see an HR policy, which is also part of that. So HR policy will speak to certainly personnel policies, but also around hiring, how we hire, you know, how we do that, where they might be advertised, and how long, et cetera, internal versus external recruitment. And then from there is also performance management. So we'll get into exactly how that's done. Unfortunately, you know, it's very common amongst municipalities and other organizations. Once someone's reached the top of their salary band, performance management then falls off, right? So that's usually the first reason why you do performance management is is to sort of move someone up the pay scale, but it shouldn't stop there. It should continue on. And like Counselor Winston's speaking about, it's education plans, goals, objectives, to make sure we have engaged employees. So it's all part of what we're hoping to do in 2021.
Perfect. Are there any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I call a vote on accepting the Administration Department for information purposes. All those in favor? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. Okay, thank you, Sarah. Moving on to Community Services Department. I have a motion moved by Counselor Massey, seconded by Counselor Noble, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report number CS 2021 04, and that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve a donation in the amount of $800 to Ecole L'Oréal for the purchase of a fat bike. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm pleased to bring this report to council, and actually, there's some background information that supports this donation in the fact that Ecole L'Oréal is working with township staff, the Community Services Department, Planning Department, as well as public works on the possibility of having a cycling trail that would link not only Ecole L'Oréal, but the other schools in Alexandria to the municipal recreation facilities as well as Island Park. So this is a project on which they contacted us a few weeks ago, and we've already got this underway. We would be working with the nine, great nine students on this. And as you know, Ecole L'Oréal has a sports program, and they use the dome as well as a Glengarry Sports Palace. And they were looking at eco-friendly options instead of renting buses to bring their students over to these facilities. And as such, they were asking the possibility of the township to help them support the purchase of 20 bikes. And their students would be able to use these. And there's even plans of being able to offer these to the community in the long run. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the committee? Go ahead, Counselor Winston.
I think it's a great idea, and I was really pleased to see that you found funds available to help with the purchase of one, not all 20 bikes. And my question was going to be about the community being able to rent them. And I see you've just mentioned that's part of the plan. So anything that promotes fitness and youth programs and availability for everyone to use, I think it's a really great program.
Yeah, she, in that, in our meeting with her, she had stated that, you know, they would be, you know, even if we had a program going in the summer, that they could be made available to us as well. So question, further questions or comments, Counselor Manley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit, I think it's a fantastic program. Don't get me wrong. I do have some concerns about municipal funds going to schools. We've sort of made, through the community grant program, we have said that we will not support agency or groups that are funded by the government. It tends to be double dipping a little bit. The schools have budgets for, for these kinds of things. I'm just a little concerned the precedent we may set in that if we offer funds to one school, other schools will follow suit as well with this.
Thank you. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Williams.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll echo Counselor Manley's concerns here, although I think this is a great project. And there's, there's no reason why, you know, you can't go ahead anyway. It sounds like staffer are already supporting it with in-kind, which is, I think, very appropriate. An ask like this, in my mind, undermines the community grant program. The community grant program was created specifically to fund community organizations and projects. And, and, and the Earth's Culture and Heritage Committee spent years, as a matter of fact, refining that program to make sure that we were, we were funding appropriate organizations and appropriate projects, and that would then support mostly volunteer organizations in order to make projects happen that could otherwise not happen. And, and we built in guidelines and eligibility criteria that were very specific in order to be able to not have organizations go through other avenues in the, through the municipality in order to get funding. Because if you allow organizations to come in on the side, and you fund them through other avenues that otherwise the community grant program wouldn't allow, you inevitably are going to undermine your own program and set precedence that then open the door for other organizations to ask for the same thing. So I just think it's generally, even though the, I mean, I'd love to be able to fund something like that, but it, I don't think it is a prudent move for us. They can, I'm sure that this project will be successful all the same, you know, with or without the donation of a bicycle.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
We actually created the sponsorship fund following council's desire to have another place where we could capture these one-off projects that seem worthwhile endeavors for the community. And we're very selective about the ones that we do bring to council. But that was specifically the reason we go through the sponsorship fund versus going through the community grants program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Madden, you're at your hand up first. Well, you, just hold on.
Yeah.
Follow up, go ahead.
Yeah, well, and that brings up another concern that I have with regards to the sponsorship fund. It's, it, it can't be used like a backdoor to, to, to getting funding. I don't see this as a sponsorship. A sponsorship is, is something where, you know, you're, you're, you're funding an event, and then, and then North Glengarry is going to get sort of the benefit of name recognition or advertising or something to that effect. A bike is not that, and I don't see it as appropriate a sponsorship item.
Go ahead, Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to echo the concerns about the school when I was reading through this, you know, sort of the the discussion with myself in my mind about, well, they have funding that comes from tax dollars. Should we be doing this? And I sort of looked at it as one, we're working on a project with the school who are designing or helping to design bike trails that, that provide access to the schools to all of the facilities for North Glengarry. It leads to revenue for the facilities to North Glengarry. And now, having heard you and say that we would realistically and ideally have access to the equipment over the summer for any other projects that we're working on. I'm, I'm kind of at the point where it balances out for me. I'm, I do have an issue with giving additional tax dollars to educational institutions that are funded. But this very much does sound like something that is a partnership between the municipality and the school and beneficial to the community overall. So I'm, I'm personally, I'm leaning towards the side of yes, $800, we can deal with that. If it was a little bigger, and if it was something that was just a plain ask without any participation or any any, any sort of contribution on their part, I would have a much, much bigger problem with it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Massey, you had a.
Yeah, on the, I, I, I tend to agree with the Counselor Madden and the Deputy Mayor and Jeff. Being a school already heavily funded or funded by the taxpayers. But Counselor Madden kind of changed my mind because he kind of highlighted the fact that these bikes are going to be around town and coming to our facilities too. When I read this, the reports afternoon, I, I would, I would rather it comes out of another fund for that, like could not, could we not use the park, park fund, or could we not use another fund for that, or like out of the economic development? And I don't kind of, it kind of scratched me a little bit there. I don't feel comfortable with that, but can we not find another fund that could come out of, or that a possibility?
And so through you, Mr. Mayor, I would see this fund as being the best fit. We don't have what I would other alternate funds. They're all dedicated funds. As you know, we just went through our budget exercise. So every, every dollar has a home already. So this would be the fund through which we would propose this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do I still have a mayor's fund or was that cut? I don't recall.
I was thinking about that, Mr. Mayor. Really?
So I think Kim can, can answer that, but I'm pretty certain that your fund was not cut, Mr. Mayor.
Your fund is still there. That's to buy me a new car or something, wasn't it?
Kim, we're on Facebook. Okay, are there any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Noble.
I'll make it quick. I just, I'm, I'm on the fence too myself, and I just wondered, it's not a large amount of money in the scheme of things. Is there a way instead to provide service, support, take over the lending program, do more of the in-kind? So it's not necessarily, we're giving money to a school, but we are helping with that project in the summer?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, at this point, it would be premature to state what the program is ultimately going to look like. It's in infancy stages. But definitely, we see this program, even though it's an undertaking from Ecole L'Oréal, as being something that will serve the community at large. So a cycling trail like this, which connects all of the schools to all of the municipal facilities, will definitely be a benefit to all of Alexandria, for sure.
Okay, Counselor Manley.
So, and do we have a guarantee that the township will, will have to have these bikes available?
So that was a commitment through you, Mr. Mayor, that was made by the school principal to us.
Yeah, okay, well. School principals change.
No, she told us she was staying. But, no, no, we can, to your, to your point, we can definitely have something, have something in writing, Counselor Manley. Okay, going to call a vote on this. All those in favor of the motion? And I'm in favor, so opposed. And there are two opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. And moving on to departmental work plan update, February 2021. I have a motion moved by Counselor Manley, seconded by Counselor Winston, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report CS 2021 05, departmental work plan update, February 2021, from the Community Services Department for information purposes. And.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the most exciting news actually isn't on this report, and that's the fact that we reopened. So as of Friday afternoon, we received word from the province that we could reopen under the orange framework, which means that all three of our major recreational facilities have reopened to the public as of yesterday. So it was a very nice change to have people going through the building all day yesterday and yesterday evening, I must say. So as you know, the multi-sports pad in Maxwell is now reopened to the public. So we resumed our regular schedules there, the same schedule we had prior to the shutdown in Christmas. All of our user groups have come back to the Glengarry Sports Palace, except for one adult hockey group. They decided not to resume. But basically, our schedule looks very, very similar to what it was prior to the shutdown. And the dome is back operational, so we invite everybody to resume their walking and their tennis and pickleball activities, as well as the use of the turf over there. So continuing onwards in that vein, we are now adjusting the ice contracts and the membership cards that individuals had taken either out at the Glengarry Sports Palace or for the dome. Those are being adjusted for the time periods that we were closed, similar to what we had done when we resumed after the last shutdown. We are having regular recreation directors meetings. We actually had one this morning, and we talked about how we were going to be managing things like public skate. There's been an increased onus to ensure that we have proper COVID tracing, which means not only do they want us to obtain copies of volunteer screenings that are done by other organizations, but they also want every individual that walks into a facility to sign our registration books. So we're working with all of our organizations for them to understand how important that is. And that comes directly from the fact that the Eastern Interior Health Unit performed some audits in some of the facilities across their territory and realized that a lot of the groups were not respecting the proper COVID directions and weren't requiring individuals to do self-assessments before coming into the facility. So you'll be glad to know that we actually were audited by the MOT, the Ministry of Transport. We had our safety plan in place, and we had all of our proper sign-in and signage as well in place. So we did pass that audit. So I'm very pleased to report that. Staffing was adjusted during lockdown, but now we're back to our full complement of staff, and we are continuing onwards with our training now that staff is back in place and able to resume that. We have activities and events with some of our partners that are starting back up. Our Glengarry Boys and Girls Youth Group is starting back up next week. So we've actually got reservations at Island Park for them on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They're going to be accessing those, those buildings in small groups. They're keeping their numbers to around 10, I'd like to say. And depending on registration, it might be a little bit lower, but I expect that parents will be happy to have a place for their children to be able to go safely. So those activities are starting back up at Island Park. We have had a meeting with them about summer camp. So that's already in the works. We're pleased to report that we're going to be offering summer camp to the community. Registration should be sent out soon to some of the parents that had accessed those services last year, and we will also be posting that information on Facebook and the website. So they will be coming back, respecting all of the COVID regulations. Again, we'll have the plan approved by the Eastern Interior Health Facility prior to our opening. So our goal is to offer safe conditions and very secure environments to anyone there who is involved in that program, staff, as well as the children that participate. Our yoga programming never stopped. It was offered through Zoom while we were in lockdown, but now we are allowed to have 10 individuals upstairs at the Glengarry Sports Palace attend. And it was interesting because when we went to a full Zoom platform, a lot of the individuals there told us that they, they were really, really looking forward to coming back in person. And when we announced that they could come back in person, a lot of them now told us that they were used to the Zoom platform and appreciate the very short commute they had to do between their living room to wherever their yoga mat was, and to be able to take the, the programming from the comfort of their own home. So it's great how sometimes having situations like this forces us onto different platforms, and we, we learn how to access our activities differently. So as you know, we're coming close to the end of the Great Canadian Kilt Skate. So please, if you have the opportunity to go skate at Mill Pond, which was just cleared today, and will be flooded hopefully by the fire department again this weekend. Thank you to the fire department for doing all of that work. Please go out there, take a picture, and send it to us, and we'll make sure that we're in contention to win the Kilt Skate capital of Canada again. So those are some of the very interesting things that have been going on this, this last month, and hopefully, if we can stay very safe and secure and our numbers keep low for COVID, we'll be able to extend our programming even more. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ann, for your report. Are there any questions from the members of the committee?
Right.
Counselor Noble.
Not a question, just a comment. I see him watching. Welcome to the new guy.
So thank you for reminding me, Counselor Noble. So to, we actually have Daryl Cox, the Development and Marketing Coordinator. He has joined the township as of this week, and we have been discussing moving forward the development and marketing strategy over the last few days.
Excellent.
Where is he? I didn't see him.
Participant.
Okay, is there any further questions, Counselor Madden? Go ahead.
Quick one through to Mr. Mayor. And just out of curiosity, we're audited by the MOT for COVID?
Yes.
What, they're just acting as a partner agency right now? Is that what's going on?
So I imagine that they were given the mandate. I know that several organizations like EMS and MOT were out canvassing the different facilities. They wanted to ensure that we had our safety plans in place, which we did. We actually had them in windows or very visible places in our facility. So the public knows that we have a safety plan, and they came in, they went through all of our restrooms to ensure that we had blocked off urinals or as well as bathroom stalls to ensure proper distancing. They wanted to see if we had markings on the floor to make sure that people stayed the proper distance away. So they basically walked us through our whole screening process, as well as took a look at our physical environment to ensure that we met all of the social distancing requirements.
Did they have any recommendations, or was everything just tiki-tiki right off the bat?
So actually, because I don't often go into the men's room, I hadn't noticed that some of the caution tape had been taken off of one of the urinals. So we had to re-caution one of the urinals with caution tape, just to ensure proper social distancing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? And in the future, you'll be checking the men's washroom every morning?
I will promise that.
I have a motion accepting this report. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to Treasury Department, I have a motion moved by Counselor Manley, seconded by Counselor Winston, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report TR 2021 07, departmental work plan update, February 2021, from the Treasury Department for information purposes. Welcome, Kim.
Welcome. Treasury Department is still, still has a lot of policies that are in the draft format at this point in time. A lot of these have or could have some financial impact with the residents. So at this point in time, it's not the time to bring them forward. So we're just putting them on hold for now. Our asset management software finally almost balances to our financial reports for amortization and depreciation. So we are bringing that forward to the auditor next week in the hopes that we can use it. It's, it's really quite powerful, robust, and saves a lot of work. And it's a great registry of our assets. The auditors will be here on Monday, so the Treasury Department is quite busy getting all the documentation ready for them. It will not be done in-house. They'll be picking up boxes, and we've sent numerous files to them electronically. Hopefully, we'll have an earlier presentation of the financial statements than last year. They didn't start their audit till May last year, and we didn't get financial statements till October. So this year, we're starting earlier. That's great. What was really great today is your T4s were sent out. So expecting them shortly. The 2021 budget has now been approved and distributed to all departments, so they know what they can spend for the year. Also, I just wanted to thank council for reading the documentation in advance and giving us the questions that you had, because it gave us time to investigate and give council the information they required. March 31st is approaching fast. That's the year-end for most grant programs. So right now, there is a lot of grant reporting that's being done. And that's about it. We're busy with the audit for the next probably three weeks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Kim? Counselor Noble.
I just had a quick question, and I was asking Kim, and neither of us can really remember the exact details of our $500 that we put aside for trees, if that was for the replanting, like the seedlings, the little guys, was it roadway? I had somebody ask me.
Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
I think that was, if I believe, if it's like last year, I know that last year, that money was used to match what Raise and Reach in
News and River.
I believe they had, they had donated $500 for trees, and I think we matched that. That's my recollection, anyway.
Ann, did you jump on? Go ahead.
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, that is actually correct. So we did have a tree drive, and we managed a COVID-safe tree drive at Island Park where the organization, the Conservation Authority, actually distributed the trees. They were all reserved ahead of time by individuals. So we are in the works with them on that program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good. Any further questions or comments? Counselor, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the, with regards to the recent budget that we passed, I just, you know, Kim, compliment you and your staff on
Thank you.
on presenting a good budget. I did have initially, you know, some concerns, especially with regards to the use of reserves. But, you know, those questions got well answered, and But, you know, those questions got well answered and I felt, you know, confident at the end of the process. But in that vein, I'm wondering if, I think it might be a good exercise for council, certainly for me anyway. Can't speak for the rest of you, but it might be a good exercise for us to have a conversation at Committee of the Whole with regards to, you know, what is our, what is council's strategy with, like, what is the intent of the Finance Department's use of reserves and the various different reserve accounts? And then what is council's strategy in terms of either building those reserves or what do we, you know, what is our strategy for the use of those reserves so that, so that we go into budget season with an understanding of exactly how we're going to, you know, either deplete or build them, whatever that happens to be. And I was also, in a similar vein, looking for, looking for maybe a bit of a report on our, the North Glengarry, our debt situation, especially in the light of the report that's coming from the Fire Department at the end of this Committee of the Whole. That'll definitely, if that gets passed, have an impact on our debt load. I'd like to just have a bit of an in-depth look at where we're at and where we're going and how we're going to manage that in terms of, you know, what that means in terms of the, you know, the percentage we're at, so to speak. And so I'm just wondering about both of those things, whether, you know, council would like to see those and that reports on those can be produced.
Through Mr. Mayor to Deputy Mayor, the one thing I can produce is we, council approved a reserve policy probably about a year and a half, two years ago. I would like to maybe distribute that to council to take a look at it and see if there might be some changes that you may want to make to it. But council did approve it. As far as the debt limits, I can bring a report to council or the Committee of the Whole in March. No problem.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, a motion to accept for information purposes. All those in favor? Motion is carried.
And sorry, just one more thing, Mr. Mayor. And so, Kim, but could we have a discussion about reserves? Like rather than just circulating it, can it be on the next agenda, please?
Certainly, but I was just going to distribute it so you know what's been previously, right? Some information for you.
For sure. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Building, Planning and Bylaw Department, I have a motion moved by Councilor Weddington, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report BP 202109, Departmental Work Plan Update, February 2021, from the Building, Bylaw and Planning Department for information purposes. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the report is again very similar to the past ones. This month has been, I guess, a little bit slower for the Building Department, especially with the lockdown. But I'm just like Ann said earlier, the lockdown is over. So we had about, I would say, 15 applications that were, I guess we can say, kept on hold. These applications will be issued probably this week. And the year looks good. I guess there's a lot of dwellings in there, semi-detached. And so the year looks, looks very good. Construction-wise, it's really busy. A lot of calls, a lot of questions about properties and whatnot. So that's good. We have been still busy with the Maxwell Water Meter inspections. As you can see in the report, we're about 236 inspections done and finalized. So it's pretty good. It represents about 65% of the total. But keep in mind, 62 of them are vacant and 26 are in process. So the plumbers are very, very busy, especially during the weekends. We get a lot of calls in the Monday morning for inspections. So that's, that's good for that. Aside from that, as I said, so the lockdown is over. So that's, that's good for the bylaw as well. You'll have a lot more, lot more, lot less, sorry, I guess, questions and whatnot. So we were, the first lockdown was mostly for like complaints about people meeting together in parking lots, public spaces and houses and whatever. This lockdown has been more, I guess, people kind of knew the basic rules. And there were a lot more questions about businesses that, like, are they allowed to be open? Am I allowed to do this, that? So it was, I guess, a lot harder in that sense for the bylaw officer to try to get the real answer as the health unit is also very busy. So it's hard to get ahold of them to have everybody on the same page. But I guess it's a good thing it's over now. So the rules are a little bit clearer in the orange zone. And then planning-wise, I guess, again, it's pretty much standstill except for the LPAT appeal for Mr. Suter's Lagoon. As you all heard, so the appeal was dismissed. So the decision, I guess, the decision that the Committee of Adjustment and the Planning Department's recommendation was the good one. So it was upheld, the decision was upheld. So the suitors are going to apply for their billing permit soon and build it as per the conditions that were imposed by the Committee of Adjustment. And yeah, I guess that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Jacob? Wow, getting off easy this week. Thank you, Jacob, for your report. I have a motion to accept the bylaw, Building, Bylaw and Planning Department for information purposes. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, Departmental Work Plan Update, February 2021. A motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Massey, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report PW 202104, Departmental Work Plan Update, February 2021, from the Public Works Department for information purposes. Welcome, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with Winter Maintenance. Staff have been busy. The last storm, they rode all weekend. Again, this week, we're getting good feedback and not many complaints. So that's good. We are going to be looking into doing something a little bit different this year with our sidewalk cleaner and blower. A lot of the municipalities are doing it now. We are kind of doing that in Maxwell, Apple Hill. What we'd like to do is have that blower open down some of the streets and blow the snowbanks onto our road allowance, which may be on some people's front lines. We're not going to be able to do it everywhere in town, but it'll definitely help out shorten the snow clearing, the overnight ones that we do. I know we tried in the past and we got some pushback. So we're going to try it again. We're going to do a campaign with a communication officer, put a press release out there, let people know what to expect and see what comes up from there. Crews will be out overnight tonight, clearing the snowbanks. So it'll be a long night for them again tonight. For the fleet, we're in process of preparing a tender for a new tandem truck. We're going to do someone different this year. We're going to get a, going to be looking to get in one with an automatic transmission. We haven't done that before, but it's, the newer trucks are coming with automatic. So it'll be easier on the operators also. We're also looking into purchasing a one-ton dump truck that can be used by different departments. It'll really help out the Water Works Department, the Roads Department. When we have a small job, we don't have to get the tandem truck out. You just get a small truck out. We're also looking purchasing a one-ten or a three-quarter inch, three-quarter ton truck also. And a float. We're looking to get a float so we can haul our excavator around for different jobs that we're doing. Spraying, we're going to be embarking with the counties on their tender for spraying. I know it's a touchy subject at times. We did the whole township last year. So what we're going to be doing this year is doing the northern part of Greenfield and the southern part, or of Kenyon, sorry, and the southern part of Laheal. And then we'll do the opposite next year. See what it's going to do. We did notice a big difference. The staff said they did notice a big difference from spraying last year. And I think it's something that we have to move forward with. I know we will get some calls about it, but we'll have to deal with them unarrangeable individual balls every time they come in.
Deputy Mayor Williams, just hold on, Dean.
Sure.
Dean, with regards to spraying, I'm not, I'm not a fan of it, but I know that, you know, municipalities do it for, for a reason. I'd like to see, really, I'd like to see more of a focus on mowing, but now is not the time for that discussion. But I do, I just want to bring this up so that we don't have the same problem that the counties had, which was spraying on property that was marked for no spray. I think we had a bit of a situation, actually it was in North Glengarry. And it was unfortunate. I, it did, the, I guess, the signs didn't get noticed and no spray was, it was sprayed where there should have been no spray. And so I just, I think it's a good idea to alert the operators to make sure they pay attention to those signs.
To you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we're going to be looking in that. We'll have a big press release on it to make sure all the news gets out there. And I think property owners, I think they're required to, if they don't want spraying, they have to do it at the beginning of the property, at the end of the property, not this, that they're laying away, I think, is what the procedure is asking for. So we'll see what happens when it comes time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Water and Sewer, Angela, her compliance officer, she's going to be presenting the Glen Robertson Annual Report, Water Report and the Maxwell Sewage Report. So I should be following up with that. In Maxwell, last week, while we had a contractor out doing our annual inspection of the generators, they noticed that the generator at the main pumping station, sewage pumping station, wasn't working properly. Found to be the controller that gave up the ghost. So it's at least 25 years old, that unit, and it's obsolete. So we're going to have to replace a big chunk of it. Comes with a pretty hefty price tag to change it. We do have a generator, temporary generator that we can hook up if need be, if there's a power outage or something happened. So we're not really that stuck right now, but they'll be in next week to do the repairs. Jacob gave an update for Maxwell hookup. So it's coming along fine. We are getting some calls, emails for extension requests. And we've been dealing with them on individual, everyone individually. We did have a water break on the weekend. It was not on our side. It was at Lancy Bakery. So they just contracted it out. They're going to be digging again in a couple of weeks to replace the sewer line. So you may see some activity in that area. And that's all I have for my department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Are there any questions for Dean? Councilor Noble.
Hi, I was talking to a couple of equipment guys in the last couple of weeks and a dealer and a guy that buys. So I wanted to know, when you go and you look for equipment, A, are you guys kind of consulting people that are not looking to sell you something but have something to say about it, or are the operators themselves? And with that in mind, are we just giving you enough money to buy the cheapest? Or are we giving you enough money in most cases to actually buy a machine that would be appropriate for the job, appropriate for the operator, make everybody happy and not just be a cat because of the name or not just be a coyote because of the price?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do look at the quality and we do get feedback from operators. So I know over the years, we did purchase some equipment that we've had a lot of issues with. We had a grader that we, it was troublesome. I think we went through a couple of engines. So trying to shy away from those. But we are looking at quality as, as a big decision maker on that.
Let us know.
Kim?
We will.
Sorry, in all fairness, I think the budgets for the equipment are on track. And in fact, most of them come in slightly under. So if we look at the big scheme of things, the equipment is evaluated by Public Works for what they need. But we do have enough budget to accommodate it. And if we don't, we go back to council and request them.
Thank you, Councilor Massey.
Mute.
Go on mute. Sounds pretty smart there.
Sure.
We were talking about the reserves there a while ago and Dean just mentioned that we have a generator in Maxwell. That would be, to me, the best to take it directly from reserve and not affect this year's budget? Is that what we're planning to do? Or because that's what we have reserves for, exactly that, I guess. I don't know. Is that what we're going to do, Dean, or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Usually we just, we have a budget for equipment repair, operating expense for that. So we usually go through our operating budget for that.
They have that there for that specific reason, in case something breaks down like that.
Okay. There's a line item for that.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to accept the, for information purposes. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, Dean.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to 2020 Annual Water Works Annual Reports. I have a motion moved by Councilor Noble, seconded by Councilor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report number PW 202105, 2020 Water Works Annual Reports for information purposes only. Welcome. Can't wait for this report. I wait for it every year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I would just like to present to you guys today the 2020 Annual Summary Report for Glen Robertson Drinking Water System and the 2020 Annual Report for the Maxwell Waste Water System. Everyone should have received a copy of the written annual report and a handout for each system. Please keep in mind, the PowerPoint today is just a tool to highlight the major points within the reports and for a full system overview to review the reports themselves. We are going to start with Glen Robertson and you'll have to bear with me while I try to share my screen as I've never done this before. Can everyone see that? Sorry, I lost you guys. What's going on here? So can you see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
So. I'll just have to. Just one second.
Go ahead, Councilor Wensing.
While she's sorting that out, I just wanted to compliment her on such a professional report. It was very well done and I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
It is easy to read.
There we go.
So we should be seeing just the PowerPoint for some reason. It won't let me start at the beginning. But essentially, so we're starting with Glen Robertson. So we're just going to review the system description, the flow summary, sampling summary, operational issues, significant costs, ministry compliance, and then any additional information. So the system description for Glen Robertson is a small municipal residential drinking water system. It's classified as GUDI, which basically means groundwater under the direct influence of surface water, which requires additional treatment. Services approximately 50 residences and it has a rated flow capacity of 224 meter cube per day or 5.6 liters per second. I apologize for the typo. And this is a basic overview of the drinking water system itself. It's a little bit busy. But essentially, we use UV light treatments as well as sodium hypochlorite to disinfect the water. We have emergency backup generator and there's no water storage facility or firefighting capability through the drinking water system, although there are firewalls located in Glen Robertson. So our flow summary for 2020, we produce just over 8,000 cubic meters. So our flow summary for 2020, we produce just over 8,000 cubic meters through our treatment system with an average daily flow of 22.1 cubic meters per day, which is about 9.8 of our rated capacity. So we're using very little of our rated capacity within the system. Um, our highest daily reported usage was 42.9 cubic meters, which was on July 6th. And you can see, there's just a kind of a daily or a monthly flow summary, just on the left, and then the comparative flows. On the right. Sampling in the system. So we do operational monitoring. Monday to Friday, we do have operators on site doing daily tests for various parameters. We had no adverse results on any of our samples or our monitored parameters this year. So we do weekly bacteriological sampling, quarterly sampling for specific parameters, and annual testing or additional sampling such as lead and alkalinity throughout the system. Operationally, so this year for Capital Works, the only work we did was we replaced two air release system, air release valves within the distribution system. All other planned capital work was deferred due to COVID issues. Um, we replaced various parts within the chlorine dosing system and the monitoring equipment. Uh, I will note, there is a typo in the actual written report in section six, which will be corrected prior to being sent off to the ministry, and it will reflect these, um, expenses that you can see on the right-hand side. So for ministry compliance, we had two inspections in 2020, one in January and one in September. Um, as you can see, didn't quite hit the hundred percent rating, which I do apologize. Uh, there's a few minor oversights with operations. Um, we have corrected them to date. Unfortunately, it just wasn't corrected before the second inspection. But now we're ensuring that our UV sensors or calibrators acquired. And we'll be having someone looking at the monitoring wells this coming summer. Um, all, all infractions were very minor in nature and don't induce a high level of risk, which is why it's only marginal decreases from a hundred percent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Um, thank you, Angela. Yeah, so with regards to the, uh, the compliance and the inspections, when you say that there's very low risk, um, what, what would the risk be, um, with, with those two non-compliance issues?
So the non-compliance issue is just a UV sensor calibration, and that's just ensuring that the UV units are working within the proper operation span. So that it's just saying that when it's 40 milligels per cubic meter per second, it's actually 40 milligels per meter per second. Um, so we do have two sources of disinfection for this water treatment. So we have UV as well as chlorine. So because of the double disinfection, there's very little risk and very little risk for contaminating.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
And, uh, the watering, I should actually mention, the monitoring wells that there was issues with aren't actually connected to our system. So they're not water-producing wells.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then other issues. So our system operations were not substantially affected by COVID. There were some personal coverage, personnel coverage was maintained at all times, staff rotation was reduced at various points for 2020 to minimize risk to operational staff. The internal audits and the DWQMS meetings have been delayed. I am working on getting those back up to snuff and getting everything back into performance. Our 2021 goals, we are gonna be upgrading one of the UV units. There will be the SCADA upgrade that Dean has mentioned um, in previous meetings. The water meteor, water meters, um, will be configured to radio transmitters. It'll be the same as our other facilities, and then we're looking at a well rehabilitation. That's for Glen Robertson. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions from anyone on Glen Robertson? I can't see everybody at this point. So if you have a question, just go ahead and ask.
Good question.
Go ahead.
To, what are we talking about in terms of well rehab, Angela?
Um, so this is an acid wash where we had a well inspection about four years ago, and there was a heavy iron precipitate along the outside of the well. It's not affecting the quality, but it could start bringing up higher toxicity levels and such. We do have filtration. So it's just to kind of clear off that, that precipitation that was noticed in the inspection.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to, uh, Maxwell.
Okay, I presume you can see the PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maxwell Waste Water System. Once again, um, we'll be covering the system description, flow summary, sampling summary, operational issues, significant expenses, ministry compliance, and additional information. So this system collects and treats residential, commercial, industrial wastewater within the village limits of Maxwell. On the right-hand side, you should be able to see a small schematic showing the collection system as well as the transmission force main of the sewage lagoon. We have approximately 286 service connections. One lift station and one main pumping station. Chemical treatment at the sewage lagoons is paste-to-flow chemical dosing. Uh, this is primarily for total phosphorus removal. We have two pack and table lagoons, and we do seasonal discharge of both cells in the spring. So this system was designed for 450 cubic meters per day of wastewater entering the wastewater lagoon. This year, our total directed flows through lagoons were just over 21,000 cubic meters, which equated out to an annual average flow, annual average daily flow of 542 meter cube per day, which is over the rated capacity. Our highest observed flow was 1,786 meters cubes. And we are currently sitting at 120% of the rated capacity. You will notice in the charts on the bottom, the green marker is the 2020 flow, treated flow from the main station. There's a spike in January. Um, unbeknownst to us, we had some heavy rainfall and the ditch backed up and allowed water to enter our bypass piping, um, which had excessive flow entry into our wet well that wasn't accounted for. Once it was discovered 10 days after it started, we then were able to block the pipe and stop all that stormwater from entering into the wet well. So this does actually increase our flows kind of falsely, if that makes sense. If you have a question, Josh?
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, uh, I noticed that it mentions the annual rated capacity 120%. That mean that, or we are over, or we still, we're way under?
No, right now, um, for 20, for the 2020 year, we are over the rated capacity.
Okay, so, so basically we have the same problem in Magdalen as we do in Alexandria?
And it appears that we do have a little bit of low discrepancies with some, like obviously the 10-day period where we had flows entering will push that average up higher when it shouldn't normally be. But yes, we are over the rated capacity.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, so this is a, a concern. We're, uh, focusing on significant development, uh, in Maxwell. And it looks by that chart that we don't have the capacity for it. Um, that is, is there, is this unusual? Uh, is 2020 unusual? Because it looks like the only month that it was actually um, at capacity and under capacity was June. Otherwise, it looks like every other month was over.
Um, no, actually June, cause we, we go off the average and not the maximum for the month. So June, July, August, September, and November, we're all under.
Okay.
Now our flows, if you look at the chart below it, our flows didn't go as low as 2016. And we did have some higher flows, but we had a shorter spring, spring thaw. So I believe the majority of this overage was caused by the heavy flows in January and then the high flows in March and April. Rated capacity does depend a lot on seasonal fluctuations. So if we have a wetter season or more heavy rain flow and more infiltration, it is possible that this will drive our numbers up.
Okay, so this isn't a, a, um, like, um, a, a user issue then. I, it's not that our, the lagoons are, are, don't have the capacity for the resident, the, the residential and commercial and industrial use here. Is that what you're saying?
Um, what, no, what I'm saying is, trying to word this properly, I apologize. Um, if we have a lot of infiltration, such as sump pumps.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I said, if we have a lot of issues such as like sump pumps and infiltration into the system, um, we will have an inflated rated capacity. So this is based on average flows, and there's a lot of variance that kind of come into this.
So Angela, I guess my question is, you know, we did, we went through Alexandria and, you know, we got people to take their sump pumps off and, uh, roof eaves off and not sending it into the sanitary system. Is that something that we need to start doing in Maxwell?
This is something we may have to start looking at within the village of Maxwell, yeah.
Okay. Anything further, Deputy Mayor?
Well, I'm just wondering, is this a, um, is this gonna send off alarm signals to the MOE?
Um, I know the MOE do check on the report. Dean, if you want to jump in, feel free. Generally, when we're over 80% of the, of the rated capacity, we have to start an EA process to look at treatment options. Because what's happening is your flows are too high and the treatment isn't sufficient for the system that's designed.
Dean, I needed that. Yeah, if I can step in, um, the thing that I'm having is, as people connect on to the system, uh, they're gonna be losing, using less water is what we're, we typically see, cause they're paying for the water now, so, um, it'll take a year to actually see, um, what the results are gonna be and if we're still gonna be over capacity. And Angela pointed out that in January, that inflow did not help. Um, sewer line itself, it's pretty tight. It's not that old. It's all plastic. So we don't have that much infiltration, and we are looking for the sump pumps. So we know which ones are out there, so we're gonna hit them also.
Counselor Messi.
Yeah, so Dean, uh, so basically what you're telling us, and now that we just connected a whole bunch of users in Magdalen, the, the, the water, the, the, the water that comes out of the, uh, the water tank should match the water that goes to the pumping table. That's right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct. Whatever we're pumping it into the system, it should be in a perfect world, should be equal, or.
Okay, so that's, that's what you're saying, that, uh, we need to wait a year adjusted to those rates? That's what you're saying?
Yes, um, like I said, um, as people come on, I think the water usage, uh, will come down, then it'll come back up, and then it'll flatten out, is what we, we are anticipating seeing anyways. Angela, so do you remember what it was that last year, uh?
Last year, the number was, I believe it was actually higher than this, and we assumed it was because of the work from the construction. That a lot of the manhole covers actually weren't sealed properly. There was a lot of infiltration when the roads were dug up. So it inflated the numbers more than it should have been. Um, now that everything's repaired, we should actually start to see these numbers coming down, which we are seeing.
Any further questions, or can Angela continue?
I just, one quick thing, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that, uh, the sump pumps become a concern or remain a concern, and I'm just looking at, it's a March to June thing. Uh, it's spring and it, it, I mean, to my mind and from what I know and what I do, to me, it's sump pumps. That would be the, the quick and easy explanation on that one, based on the, uh, on the line graph.
Yep. Okay. Angela, continue.
Okay. Um, so, or flow summary in regards to the spring discharge. So this year, we started on March 19th, or sorry, in 2020, we started on March 19th and ended on April 6th. It lasted for 433 hours, and we discharged approximately just over 225,000 cubic meters. Um, we sampled on four occasions, and the result will be discussed later in the sampling results. But everything appeared normal and in line with previous amounts. So sampling, we do have three types of sampling within the system. We have our raw monitoring, our pre-sample discharge, and our discharge sampling. So all sample results were good with the exception of TSS. Um, on the discharge side, out of the four samples, we had two exceedances. So the average ended up over the compliance limits. Everything was reported. We passed our fatality. Uh, groundwater and surface water monitoring. This work is contracted out to JP 2D Consulting Incorporated in conjunction with Greg Galloway. So monitoring is, monitoring is over three periods annually, semi-annually, and three times per year based on the requirements that are ECA. The groundwater side of things, uh, it's showing that the lagoons are having lighter impacts, although there's no potable water users within 500 meters down gradient. And all the impacts that were observed were well below the compliance issues. But at this point, you're not required to have a plan or anything in place. And then in regards to the surface watering, surface water monitoring, there was no impact. And all parameters are well outside of what was observed in the surface water. Operational issues. Um, in December, we had a sewage pump failure at one of our, the smaller pumping station. It was sent out for repair and reinstalled in January 2021. We had some significant infiltration caused by storm dish backup that I explained earlier. Uh, there was loss of alarms due to damaged bell lines. Everything was repaired within 48 hours of discovery. There was a minor issue with the generator at the lagoons. We had to replace some parts in order to get it operational, and some minor data loss during the spring discharge, which is due to our data logger, which uses batteries. Um, and in the colder weather, it drains the batteries a lot quicker. So, but everything was manually calculated based on the events before and after. Um, the only other issue was that we had done some work to the entry fencing post due to damage through wear and tear and just other random issues with people accessing. Um, ministry compliance and inspections. So typically for sewage systems, inspections are only done once every three years. And there's an annual review based on the reports that are submitted. So our last inspection in Maxwell was in December 2014. Uh, there's no issues at this time, and currently we do not have any inspections that we know of coming up, but because our last one was so long ago, it is quite possible we can have an inspection at any point. that we know of coming up, but because our last one was so long ago, it's quite possible we can have an inspection at any point. Um, so once again, the system wasn't substantially affected by COVID. Personal coverage was maintained at all times. Staff rotation through twenty twenty was reduced. And the twenty twenty-one goals for this system, the upgrading of the pump station control panels, upgrading the pumps and the sewage, sewage station grading replacement. It should be noted that the, uh, pump station controls and panels as well as pumps are getting a little long in the tooth, so we do need to start looking at replacing some of those. Questions, comments, concerns?
Questions? I can't see everybody, so if you have something, just, uh, no? Okay, getting up easy on this one, Angela.
Uh, yeah, I just have these two systems. I'm currently working on Alexandria Water and Sewers, so those will be presented at a later time between now and March.
Excellent. Thank you, Angela, for your report. I have, uh, I have a motion moved by Brendan Noble, second by Counselor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report number PW twenty twenty-one zero five twenty twenty Water Works Annual Reports for Information Purposes only. All those in favor?
Sorry, I'm here. Sorry.
Okay, moving on to Fire Department, uh, fire departmental work plan update. I have a, uh, motion moved by Counselor Manley, second by Counselor Wentzink, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report FD twenty twenty-one zero two departmental work plan update, February twenty twenty-one, from the Fire Department for information purposes only. Welcome, Chief.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, just a quick, uh, work plan update for February. Uh, in terms of recruitment, so as you are aware, we just hired some new recruits. So each new recruit was provided conditional offer of employment, uh, where they accepted and, uh, right at this time, they're, uh, we're set to start the course probably, uh, April with them just due to COVID. So we're gonna be planning, um, in the coming months. So, uh, the new probationary firefighters included, so just, uh, just list them there for you is Station One. You have Alexander Laund, Pierre-Luc Saboury, uh, Tyler Stewart, Matt, and it's your, uh, aboard. And it, and Station Two, Caitlin Spoor and Helen Palm. So as I said, um, these new recruits are gonna be uploaded into, or the NFPA, um, one thousand one firefighter one course, which will be, um, taking place in-house, uh, with our own instructors. So looking forward to getting those new recruits, uh, in place for this year. In terms of automatic aid agreements, where we started the review of the Champlain Automatic Aid, uh, where we're gonna be having, uh, follow-up meetings in the coming weeks. So hope to have, um, a report, uh, coming forward to, uh, committee of the whole, uh, next month. Exchacation equipment, so this was, uh, one of the twenty twenty-one budget items. So the tools were just recently purchased from Code Four, where they're gonna be stationed in the apparatus in Maxwell. So, uh, looking forward to receiving those tools. Once we receive them, they'll be placed in upper apparatus. Will it be a great, uh, new asset and, uh, and tool for the, um, for the highway and as well as just, um, Northland area wide as, you know, in terms of if there is any requirement, those tools are, are key aspects for farming, auto extracations as well. So looking forward to getting those tools into, uh, and then we'll begin some training, additional training that Code Four provides with these, uh, with these tools. Uh, in terms of the communication, uh, I've started the, uh, phase four of the project. I started with the vendor bear calm. In terms of looking at, uh, the point-to-point system going to our coronal dispatch. However, this is gonna align with our, um, our dispatch contract that we currently have in place with, uh, coronal police. The reasons for that is, uh, it is, our contract is due with coronal police. Yeah, next year, so we want to ensure that if we're gonna put any infrastructure in place, this is a long-term aspect that we, uh, we need to be ensure that this is viable long-term wise for, for us in Northland area. So we're gonna be evaluating this as a whole, uh, for the project. So, um, some key aspects of going to coronal that we have seen some, uh, preliminary evaluations that the topography going to coronal is very, um, there's a degradation, so there is sometimes loss of signal. So we want to ensure that, um, we have all the measures in place and that it does align with our, our budget requirements to move forward on this. So, um, in terms of COVID nineteen update, uh, we're continuing to follow all the recommendations as the province, upon, based on the current level. So a new safety bulletin was issued to all the members, uh, in terms of, so we've reopened, uh, we're gonna be starting training back up in February and getting back at, uh, training following, um, strange, obviously procedures in place in-house of how to, uh, to mitigate any, um, uh, contamination. So, along with, um, you know, which aligns with the COVID, uh, procedures. We, uh, as you're aware, we put in a new training platform, which is online for all our members. This is Target Solutions. So again, uh, we just went live with it, uh, last week with all our members. So this will be, um, going forward. Uh, it's, it's a great spot for all our members to have, uh, information. There's a bulletin board online where, uh, every, all the members have, are aware of everything that's going on within the department for training purposes and for health and safety, as well as the, um, we've added the, the newsletter that's on there. So it is a, an information, uh, area for all the members to go to, uh, to gather, um, information on the, um, uh, what's going on within the department. So, and that pretty much concludes, uh, my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? None. I have a motion to accept the Fire Department for a, a report for information, information purposes. Uh, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to, uh, the second part. Uh, I have a motion moved by Counselor Massey, seconded by Counselor Wentzink, uh, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report number FD twenty twenty-one zero three. And that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council prove the purchase of a pumper tanker for Station Three to an upset limit of five hundred and twenty thousand. And further, that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council authorize staff to single-source the purchase of the pumper tanker to Battleshield Industries Limited as per section twenty-one point one of the procurement policy. And further, that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council authorize staff to fund the purchase of the pumper tanker through an infrastructure Ontario loan amortized over the useful life of the equipment. Chief Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, this report is, uh, being, uh, brought forward to the members of, uh, council, uh, with information relative to the current, uh, status of one of our vehicles in Maxwell. The currently, this vehicle, uh, has been placed out of service, uh, since February ninth. This vehicle is a tanker, which is typically is utilized for shuttling water as it's part of our, our fleet and, uh, provides, uh, throughout our whole township. So, um, as a result of the vehicle being placed out of service due to, uh, serious, uh, engine failures inside it, so, um, currently at this point, uh, it's not being used, um, for any incidents whatsoever. Uh, the mechanic was brought in to assess the condition of this vehicle, where it was determined that, uh, it was the cost of the uh, repairs would be up to, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars. In twenty twenty, this apparatus actually seen, um, engine, uh, issues as well. Where we, we were able to rectify it, uh, however, um, the result, the, the cost through, in, in twenty twenty actually was, um, was up to, you know, about seventy-five hundred dollars where, was, of work was put into this vehicle already in, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, just to note as well, this vehicle, uh, underwent a full engine replacement ten years ago as well. It is a, uh, two thousand one freight liner, um, with a cat engine. So this engine was fully rebuilt approximately ten years ago. So as a result of, of the tanker being put out of service, uh, this does leave our township with, uh, only two, uh, tankers. Which, which are available for instance involving water, our water shuttle program, as well as for Station Three. Um, this vehicle is utilized, um, for, as a blocker vehicle on the highways and for any incidents, um, assisting for that, that purpose in terms of safety. So, uh, event of any incidents right now, uh, we've put, uh, measures in place to ensure that we do have, we can activate our mutual aid partners based on the geographical location of the incident that would be involved. So we do have availability, um, from our partners around, uh, Northland area, which, um, we can however, there is a, obviously a different timeframe and so forth. And, uh, so in terms of, as well, um, for Maxwell, um, now that we do have the hydrants, so in terms of the built-up areas, this does, um, reduce the risk a little bit in terms of even with the transportation line. So, um, if there is any, uh, incidents in these built-up areas, um, the requirement for the, the tanker isn't there. So I do have that availability, availability with pirates to, to source from, um, those sources. So, um, as council is aware, uh, twenty twenty, the recent twenty twenty-one budget, I did present a recommendation to defer the, uh, replacement of this specific vehicle in Maxwell uh, until twenty twenty-two, where it would reach its full life expectancy. So unfortunately, um, you know, this, uh, unfortunately, the mechanical issues presented itself just recently. However, this, this vehicle, um, in the ten-year capital plan, fleet plan, um, was due to be replaced in twenty twenty-two. Uh, where we were hoping to present a, uh, a report to council in September for a purchase, um, of the vehicle in early twenty twenty-two. So in terms of, um, it is my responsibility to, to provide, um, counsel, the reports based on our vehicles to ensure that our vehicles are meeting, um, the township requirements for the fire underwriter survey as well as just the due diligence in terms of what, uh, the service we provide to the, uh, to the township. One of the key aspects that's, that is part that this vehicle does, um, is with the fire underwriter survey. Uh, it is important that we do keep a good stance, um, which reflects basically our, uh, insurance for it commercially and residentially. So, um, the fire service obviously is very unique in terms of, um, vehicles and the aspects that, uh, the timeframes that they do require to be changed at. And, um, however, these, these vehicles do sit, uh, but however, uh, studies have shown that, you know, vehicles that sit and, uh, fire service vehicles are put under an immense amount of stress. When they are put into service, such as the case as, uh, Tankers Three, which has, uh, is, uh, a vehicle that carries a significant amount of water and the stress on the engine has proven itself over its life expectancy of, um, now twenty years with, uh, where we've seen engine replacements and, uh, additional, um, uh, costs right now as it's at its end of its life. So in terms of, I've provided just a, a quick chart in here, just we did, um, as the vehicle was placed out of service, we wanted to get a good picture as to where, um, this vehicle lied and where we should go in terms of, um, of replacing or repairing this vehicle. The operating budget that, um, is allocated is thirty-three thousand five hundred for the year. Yes, with the estimated, uh, repair costs of up to twenty-six thousand dollars. That would be a significant impact to the operating, uh, budget. Along with, there was some, uh, other work that was anticipated on this vehicle for twenty twenty-one in terms of suspension. Uh, that needed to be repaired in terms of safety. So, um, we've already looking at, uh, at least the fire utilizing about five to eight thousand dollars, uh, of work that was gonna be required on this, uh, specific vehicle. At this time, the, you know, we anticipate in the current, uh, status of, of this vehicle. We, um, we would be auctioning this vehicle, uh, putting it up for auction for sale. In the event, whether it be in twenty twenty-two or, or currently, uh, where the estimated cost would be, we would hope to, to receive between twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, based on the current status of it. So some of the options I want to present to the council is, um, one, we could, uh, completely required, uh, repair work on Tanker Three, uh, and where it would be put back into service hopefully by, by March. This would not increase the resale value of the tanker, so as such, um, the cost would be sunk and not, uh, recouped through the sale of the, of the vehicle. Uh, the department vehicle, uh, maintenance budget would be nearly, um, all spent in one repair in the first quarter of the yearly budget line in jeopardy over the next, um, over the next year. Uh, the second option would be, um, the replacement of Tanker Three with a newer demo, uh, pumper tanker by utilizing a single-source procurement, which could potentially result in the, uh, delivery of the vehicle in, uh, June or July. Utilizing a regular procurement could extend the timeline from, uh, six to eight months resulting in possession of, uh, twenty twenty-two. Leaving the gap of, uh, a vehicle that's out of service. The new pumper tanker would require to meet all our, our requirements. It would be the same specifications as our other tankers. The, I would endeavor to, to sell the, the old tanker, uh, the, the freightliner tanker this year as well. And in light of that, some of the financial implications, uh, aligned with this, uh, report is, uh, the cost of the new pumper tanker is estimated, um, at five twenty, uh, with the recommendations, uh, to extend the loan over a lifecycle of twenty years. It is recommended the loan be secured through infrastructure Ontario as the interest rates are favorably and longer term is available for this aspect. Uh, the twenty twenty-one loan payments estimated would be, uh, eight thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one. Uh, could be covered by the operating budget or resale of, uh, the, of the, um, the freightliner. So, uh, twenty-one point one, if the procurement to policy provides a single-source purchasing where it is in the best interest of, of the township, um, I believe in this case, uh, the time saved approximately six to eight months is significant enough to single-source the Battleshield Industries, where we've utilized and, uh, they do have, uh, tankers available. Just recently, since preparing this report, um, the cost of the tanker would be actually, we received an amount of, that would be in the range of four ninety-nine versus five twenty, just to note for the, for this year report. And, um, a tanker in twenty twenty-two would range at, uh, five fifteen.
So. Four ninety-nine, a fire sale?
I don't know.
Can, how do I turn her off?
So, um, unfortunately, this wasn't something that, uh, the Fire Department was prepared, uh, in twenty twenty-one to, um, to, to counsel. Unfortunately, we, you know, um, preparing this report to, to surprise you, everyone of, uh, of what the situation is and the status of our, our vehicle and where we want to go, uh, of this.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Wentzink.
I don't think we have a choice. I think you presented your case very well. And that is why we have contingency funds, because we can't predict when equipment fails. So I like your idea of the financing over twenty years to make it manageable. And hopefully you'll be able to sell the old tanker for, for what, what it's worth, I guess, in the stages that. So thank you for looking into all the options.
Thank you, Counselor Noble.
I just was wondering, Chief, um, selling it, I mean, the resale value is not extraordinary. If you were going to, A, if you're happy with the one source, the company you've used them before, like them, you have good equipment. Uh, the, what you would buy, would it be the same? And in that sense, would it be a possibility? Or would it be of any interest to hang on to this truck for parts? Uh, if it, if everything else will be similar?
Yeah, to, um, through you, Mr. Mayor. This vehicle that, uh, from Battleshields, uh, Limited, um, the price that was provided was actually, um, for at four ninety-nine is actually still lower than, um, what was, from the last RFP that went out in, uh, twenty nineteen for the last pumper tanker. The last bids that came in from other vendors were, uh, still higher than this, uh, this year price. So, uh, we're very, with Battleshields Limited, um, it does align with our specifications. It is, uh, the same vehicle. It would be a replicate of, uh, the vehicle, uh, that's stationed at Station Two and at Station One, so it would be, um, our fleet would be all similar at this time. Uh, in terms of parts, uh, we are better to, um, to auction this vehicle as a whole. It is, you know, um, this vehicle can be useful to, to other, um, you know, companies. It is, you know, this vehicle can be useful to to other, you know, companies or whatever, whatever other purposes. But in terms of the actual vendor line here. I am very pleased with the service from Battleshield and in terms of the vehicle that is available and. Based on timelines that they're able to deliver this vehicle, I'd be satisfied with it.
Thank you. Further questions? Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, Chief, how a municipality of our size would have? How many tankers? Do you know?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a very large. A large territory typically of a territory this size, you should have at least four tankers. In line, based on however, we are protected hydrants and now given the fact with Maxwell, this does. Impact and give us a lot of other water sources, especially with the transmission line. Which basically, it's it's based on where incidents occur, we're just going to be showing water from a water source. The the water project has significantly provided better water source for firefighting purposes as well. For residents, even for insurance purposes and for our fire underwriters survey rating. So. But based on our size, big structure fires ideally for tankers would be ideally for our township.
Thank you.
So now that you've asked that question, Deputy Mayor Williams, you want to order a fourth tanker while we're at it?
At four ninety nine each, why not?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, we we bumped this to next year. So realistically, if we're talking about this in budget time next year, we'd be financing this at this that point as well, right? This isn't something we're going to pull out of reserve. This isn't something we're gonna budget for for the year. We'd be financing it. So. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just looking at this in terms of what our hit is this year. If our cost this year is eight thousand dollars, we're sort of taking on an eight thousand dollar cost a year in advance. Am I correct in summarizing it that way?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that would be correct. Yes. So. Basically, the real impacts here is just it wouldn't be going through an RFP, it'd be single sourcing it. In efforts to try to get this vehicle in service in a quicker timeframe where. We were anticipating preparing a a report to council to to move forward on the twenty twenty two aspect of putting RFP together in September. In efforts to try to get this vehicle, knowing that this vehicle was very high risk in terms of it has broken down. Go responding to structure fires. So it has places in in jeopardy a couple of times already. So. But yes, the impacts for twenty twenty one are minimal and could be offset by the cost, the the sale of. The sale of this apparatus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wensing.
Wondering if we should be looking at repairing the tanker then as a backup if there is a need in future, if our financial implications are not quite. You know, as high as as we thought, like I like the way Mike is looking at it by saying. We're really only spending eight thousand dollars one year earlier. Should we be looking at trying to salvage this tanker?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, it would be my recommendation that we salvage this tanker. It's gone through its life expectancy, especially based on studies that have shown. Once a fire vehicle does reach its life expectancy, it, you know, this is what occurs and it becomes very onerous on budgets. And and so forth. So.
What are the ages of the other two tankers?
So right now, it's a two seventeen and a two thousand and twenty. So this would align in terms of replacement down down the road of they're all separated about at two years apart. So.
Okay, everyone good? I will call the vote on this. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. There are none opposed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
You want to be a part?
Just. We're all very clever around this table, Chief. Don't go eyeing another big ticket item for twenty.
I just looked at the long range budget there or whatever. I pulled it out or whatever. There's no, the next, the next one's coming in twenty three, I think.
Yeah, so yeah, twenty four, twenty four, twenty twenty four.
And we're gonna hold.
I don't want another budget item.
Hey, thank you, Chief, for your reports.
Can I just ask a quick question, Mr. Mayor? Chief, just wondering if if council will be getting any any further updates from the fire that occurred on the Fourth of Canyon. This last this last Saturday. Asking for at the at this meeting, but I'm just saying, will there be further information coming to council?
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I can provide a final update to council. And that could be forthcoming through through email, through another.
Is the investigation closed now?
All through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll I'll provide that in the notification.
Okay, moving on to matters arising from standing committees. Counselor Massey, raison region conservation authority update?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Tomorrow is our first meeting of two thousand and twenty one, I believe. Or I miss January one. Anyway, we're we're having a meeting tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock. Also, I know council members, we had sent the, we had backed the. A motion to like to send to the Ontario government. So regarding the. Re reformulating of the conservation authorities, anyway, the government decided to implement a. Input committee. So we it it proceed towards the input, input from the reason. From the region conservers. Authorities and just to get their input before implementing the new laws on conservation. So I guess if anybody understood what I said, I'd also, I'll add more news from tomorrow afternoon meeting.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the Maxwell Manor update, Counselor Massey.
There again, we're, we did have a meeting last week, I believe, that I missed it two weeks ago. Everything is going good. Believe that some staff got vaccinated, whereas we were waiting for a thousand. Instant COVID test, but that got delayed, but I think we're in line. The situation changes pretty much every week because the government keeps changing dates on us, but so far so good, no outbreak. Everybody's, the CEO is doing a really good job, staff is doing a really good job. And we have a. I don't know if I can connect you guys to the newsletter, but there's a newsletter going out every week of the manor. And it's very informative and I guess it's very much appreciated by the rest of the residents and their families.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, and Jacques, let me just follow up. I was talking to somebody whose parents were in there yesterday. Everyone who wanted one has been vaccinated, like the residents, with both doses?
I believe we, like everywhere else, they're very limited. So I know they were supposed to be January twenty second with the first vaccination date. That got postponed and I believe last week got some, but I believe they're still on their first dose.
They've all been vaccinated as of last Saturday.
Not not with the second dose, though.
Yes.
Everyone with the second.
Yep.
Yeah, the second one is is worse and that's what I heard about, so.
Excellent.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Glengarry Pioneer Museum, Counselor Noble.
Boom. So they are planning for a semi-normal summer, hoping to have at least one or two events. Always looking for volunteers, especially anyone that's interested in being on board and attending meetings. Trying out a new software that should make everything efficient. Because they're picturing having to pre-sale tickets so you have everybody's contact information. And then, of course, if you have to cancel. You have everybody's contact information. Then they're they're looking, because tourists might not be a thing this year. They're looking for ideas for displays that would appeal to locals. And so my suggestion was something like this phenomenal Facebook page. That adult Keith resident started and we're getting pictures from fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years ago. So I suggested that maybe something similar for. Dunvegan, Maxwell, St. Elmo, that area, and then other displays. So if anyone has any ideas, contact anybody you know that's connected to that museum, what you would like to see as a display.
Okay, great. Thank you. Arts, culture and heritage update by Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today's the deadline for the community grant program. And I believe according to TARA, there's with quite a few applications. The committee will meet the first Monday in March to discuss and vet the applications. I believe as usual. Council members, if want, if they want to see the applications. Prior to to it coming to council, I think there'll be a package available at the township office. Is that correct? And we've done that in the past, I know. Hoping we can do that again.
So yes, that is correct. We'll have the package ready by Friday.
Okay, all right, so.
Yeah, really.
No kidding. The other thing that we quickly discussed at our last meeting was that there's been some some. Significant changes to the Ontario Heritage Act, and that's going to have some implications for municipalities. It centers around the idea of listing properties versus designating properties. So the committee is going to be discussing these changes at our next meeting and we'll try to develop a a plan moving forward. That will then come to council for discussion and possible approval at that point. So.
Okay, great. I skipped over my report. Glengarry Archives update. We have a Zoom meeting this evening. County Council update, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, so we just finished the county council budget this morning. We spent a marathon day yesterday with county council and right on the heels of county council was budget. And then we didn't quite get it all finished, so we finished budget today. It it hasn't been approved yet. But it looks like SDG is looking at a point seven for. Percent tax rate decrease, which is excellent news, very excellent news. And then with regards to the county council meeting. There was a new member appointed to the library board. I forget who, it's a it's a young person, I forget their name, but that's good news to have some diversity on.
Isaac's son.
Oh, sorry.
Jennifer McIsaac's son, the counselor from South Stormont.
Yeah.
His son.
Yeah, so so that's that's good news. The the CAO outlined an RFP that's going out for an educational consultant. And that educational consultant will be putting together basically a strategy or a plan. To help SD and G. You know, create some movement with the provincial government with regards to education. And 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 hopefully get some solutions on the table. So that was approved by county council. And other than that, there was a lot of small items.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving on to Friends of the Trails update, Counselor Wensing.
We met in February and they, there was discussion on signage. So Anne has been helping with. The signage to promote the trails at Island Park. We're also looking at. Finding benches that we can put along the trail where people can donate and have plaque in memory of their loved ones. So we're just having difficulty. Because of COVID, trying to source those benches and also looking at different promotional events that will be advertised on Facebook. We won't meet until April.
Excellent. Thank you. Community Development, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you. We we have a meeting coming up. We just had a special meeting, actually. That where where we reviewed a bunch of questions that were posed by members of the community development committee. With regards to the IHA project. And so that was a good exercise. It 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 helped. Kind of clarify some of the direction. That IHA is going and how the municipality is handling several items. If you want any details, you can always contact Sarah or myself. As similarly, we are we're going to be having a regular meeting of the community development committee coming up next week. I believe Steve Grieverson, the IHA president, will be a delegation at that meeting. If anybody would like to attend, just as a fly on the wall, you're always more than welcome. And and then with regards to the. How these names are getting all mixed up in my head, the development and marketing strategy coordinator. Has has been hired and that is Daryl Cox. Is he still a, is he is he still on this call or did he leave?
He's gone.
He's gone. So we will, I I think, be meeting him formally next week. So that's really good news. We'll get the. Development and marketing strategy. Hitting the ground and running. Thanks.
Thank you for your report. That concludes our meeting. Notice of motion, next committee, the whole meeting is Wednesday, March seventeen.
Come on.
Hard no on that, Sarah. We're gonna have to reschedule that. I mean, you can, we can do it, but. Yeah, you don't want to.
We all know where you're gonna be.
Exactly, exactly. And there's nothing wrong with that. So we'll reset, but to the either the Tuesday or the Thursday.
Is there any talk of of live meetings again or where are we at with with that? Any ideas, sir?
Sarah, am I catching her and she's not there?
So certainly, we're we're going to have a discussion. Jamie and I were just discussing a support to the whole about. The possibility of doing some public consultation for the pre bylaw also that we want to get back at. And then also being in person. So we're going, because we're, this orange is new for us. And we're going to be reaching out to the EUHU to see what what protocol may be in place. And I think we'd all like to get back together. It's definitely more personal. So I'll be in touch and certainly I will look to finding out which other day we want to meet. Satisfy the March seventeenth meeting, so.
It might be better the day before.
Yeah.
Good call.
What am I missing? What's the, what's that date?
Saint Patrick's Day?
Oh, okay, right.
You need to get out of Maxwell sometimes.
I know, I gotta do that.
Okay, so next meeting will be determined and I have a motion to adjourn. A motion moved by Counselor Wensing, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. There being no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at. Four forty nine. PM. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. Thank you, everyone online. It's great that we're back to Orange. So please, if you can, get out and support your small businesses as much as possible. Again, our numbers went down again today to one hundred and twelve active cases in the entire Eastern Ontario Health Unit. So. Let's let's keep those numbers going down. So let's play it smart so that we don't have to close down again. And. Again, please support your local businesses. Have a great day, everyone. Thanks.